We're ready?
All right.
Call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Is Bonnie here? You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Rabbi.
I invite you all to join me in prayer. It has wisely been suggested that another person's physical needs are our spiritual needs. This means that to live a meaningful life, a life filled with the Divine Spirit, we must concern ourselves with the physical well-being of others. We come together this evening to devote our time and energy to the well-being of our community. We give thanks to the Holy Source of all being, which inspires the vision of this council, and for their hands and hearts, which are directed towards this important work. We ask God that you bless them and their entire families with health and strength, that they may continue to be a source of inspiration to the town of Fountain Hills. Grant them the resources, physical, emotional, intellectual, and spiritual, which they will need to continue to nurture their vision for our future. Bless our leaders this day and every day with the knowledge of your nearness and your support. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Rabbi Koppel from Temple Beth Havagot. Roll call, please, Bev.
Mayor Shlom.
Here.
Councilmember Cantino.
Here.
Councilmember Dickey.
Here.
Councilmember Lejeune.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Arshambo.
Here.
All right. Next, we'll go on to reading of a proclamation declaring April as Volunteer Month, which is -- who can argue with that? You got one? Everybody seems to have a blank agenda. I couldn't make this up, but let me try to just reopen it. I'm gonna go back out to the web, since we are so -- there isn't on that document.
Yep, mine's blank, too. Oh, meeting's over.
Not that easy. Not that easy.
wireless isn't working, so I don't even know if it's getting --
No, that doesn't --
Yeah, that doesn't work.
I/O error has occurred.
Where's Mike?
All right, well, if you guys keep trying to find it, you'll have to trust me when I read the proclamation here. Whereas April is designated National Volunteer Month and giving freely to others is one of the noblest of human enterprises, and whereas this year marks the 36th annual celebration of Volunteer Month created in 1974 to recognize the efforts of dedicated community volunteers, and whereas nationally more than 120 million volunteers working in their communities contribute their time and talents daily to make a real difference in the lives of others, and whereas more than 300 Fountain Hills volunteers donate their time to the town of Fountain Hills by giving approximately 6,000 hours per year to serve in the community center, senior activity center, and in the municipal court, as well as volunteering in departments at Town Hall, including Public Works, Planning and Zoning, Accounting, Administration, and Parks and Recreation. Now, therefore, I, J.T. Shlom, Mayor of Fountain Hills, do proclaim April as Volunteer Month in the town of Fountain Hills and hereby express thanks to the many volunteers who support the town of Fountain Hills by generously giving their time and skills to benefit our community, dated the second day of April 2009. Thank you, volunteers. Keep up the great work. We need you. Now, we have a departmental division overview, informational overview of services provided by Finance and Licensing. Julie, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance Department is one of the divisions included in the Administration Department. The Administration Department is -- consists of Finance, as well as the Town Clerk, Human Resources, Information Technology, the Town Manager, and -- but tonight, we're just gonna focus on the Finance Division. The purpose of the Finance Division is the safekeeping of the town funds. It's also to ensure that there's a legal process for purchasing. We also administer the sales tax collection, and we also administer and track the grant Some of our responsibilities are financial reporting and control, our investment of our idle funds, budgeting and forecasting, payments to our vendors, billings for our services, particularly licensing. We have business licenses, animal licenses, and liquor licenses, and we also coordinate the special events. The Finance Team consists of Mary Martin, who's our accounting supervisor, Viata Bogdan, our purchasing accounts payable, Jill Mormon, she's our accounts receivable and our cash receipts, Paula Woodward, she handles our business license and our special events, and we have three SRS that are -- and these are all part-time positions for our front desk animal -- our animal licensing and our reception. And I have to say that this team has really done a very good job of implementing the new municipal software that we went live with on March the first. They've done a really good job. We went through the first month, and everybody's gotten paid and gotten paid on time, so we're -- I'm really proud of them. Other services that we provide is the central telephone reception. Public records requests go through the front counter, through the CSRs. They also provide notary service to residents that come in. They process all the mail for the -- for Town Hall. They schedule the invocations for each council meeting, as well as handling all the barking dog complaints. Some of the statistics, the number of active business licenses that we currently have, 2,460. The number of active dog licenses is 3,515, and of those dog licenses, about 65 percent of the people come into Town Hall to get their dog license. Processed 18 liquor licenses and 20 alarm permits. We process about 4,000 invoices each year, and we process and remit 2,500 checks each year. We've had 10 sales tax audits so far this year, and of that, we've received $79,000 in audit assessments. Our average funds invested, this is all of our combined funds together, is $24 million. Currently, our year-to-date interest yield is 0.88 percent, which is pretty low.
It's not negative.
It's not negative, no. We have received 12 Government Finance Officers' Annual Financial Reports, and that's for our annual CAFR, the Audit Report, as well as seven awards from the Government Finance Officers Association for our annual budget. Our Moody's Bond Rating is still a very good bond rating at AA3. We have had 20 special events so far this fiscal year, and we've been administered 13 We provide notary services, approximately 249 notary services so far this fiscal year, and we've had 203 public records requests. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the Finance Division from the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie, very much. Any questions for Ms. Getty? I think some of those numbers still surprise me that they're so high, the dogs and many of the others, but it's a lot of paper that's been moving through, but more requests for other items than I suspect I would have expected. Any questions, comments? Good work. Thank you for bringing us up to speed on that department.
Thank you.
Now, we get to do another special item, which is recognition of service for two of our former Strategic Planning Advisory Commissioners, Mike Tyler and the youth representative, Martez Green. So I'll come down. We got a plaque, and I'll say a few words to reflect on there, on your service. Thank you for stepping up, but come on forward. All right, Martez, pleasure to see you again. Mike? Thank you very much. We'll start with Martez Green here. Martez was appointed as Youth Commissioner to Strategic Planning Advisory Commission in December of 2006 and served over two years until February 2009. Her participation on the commission enabled the SPAC to be -- to have a valuable perspective of the youth of Fountain Hills, and her unique contribu -- contribution is very much appreciated by the town and the commission. We know that Martez will continue to excel in all of her endeavors as she moves on to college next year, and we would like to recognize her service to SPAC by presenting her with this plaque. Thank you, Martez. Get a picture with you and Bob on your next slide. All right, now, Mike Tyler. Long before the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission was formed, Mike Tyler was hard at work on the Technical Advisory Committee that was the key to the development of the town's strategic plan. For over a year, he volunteered his time and talent to the committee meetings, Town Halls, and surveys that were necessary in order to create the first strategic plan. Although active in the community in many other ways, Mike volunteered his service when the first Strategic Plan Advisory Commission was formed and served on the commission for three years, from February 2006 to February 2009, during which time he was elected first Vice Chair and then Chair of the commission. We'd like to honor Mike tonight for his selfless service to the town and SPAC and present him with the plaque. All right, next item is called to the public. Anyone with cards?
Yes, Mayor Robert Deppi.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Bob Deppi. I live at 16247 North Boulder. My concern tonight is the council appointment to replace Keith. You have indicated that the -- you intend to have a special appointment to replace him rather than hold a special election. Appointments may be appropriate if there are only five or six months left in his term. However, Keith had over three years left to serve when he passed away. The council has also stated that spending $15,000 is too expensive to hold a special election. In my opinion, he just wasted last month almost $30,000 to build a parking lot for five cars that were probably used for 10 people. The citizens of Fountain Hills deserve to be represented and deserve to have an opportunity to express that representation through the voting process rather than have a political pointy represent them. Please consider holding a special election this fall.
Thank you, Ms. Deppi. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Andrew, is there any clarification you can give on that, or comment?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if we could consider it responding to criticism, but we'll certainly contact Mr. Deppi and let him know what the Town Code provisions are with respect to appointments.
All right, thank you. I know it's limited to what's on the agenda, but appreciate that. All right, first item on our agenda is a consent agenda. Request a motion as listed. So move.
Second.
All in favor indicate -- or discussion, no? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Roll call, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, guys.
Councilmember Cantino.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Lejeune.
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey.
Aye.
Mayor Shlom.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Arshambo.
Aye.
Mayor Six Zero.
Thank you. Reminder, all council members speaking to the microphone. Thank you very much. All right, onto the regular agenda. First item, consideration of appointing one citizen to serve the remaining term of a resigning Planning and Zoning Commissioner beginning April 2, 2009, and ending September 30, 2009. I move to appoint Art Tolles. May I have a second? Second? Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor Six Zero.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tolles here tonight? All right, well, congratulations, Mr. Tolles. Thanks for stepping up. All right, next item, presentation and discussion of possible directions of staff regarding American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009 Economic Stimulus Funds. Welcome, Randy.
The United States government recently approved national funding of an economic stimulus package, which is technically known as the American Resource and Reinvestment Act of 2009, or by its initials, R.A. Portions of that were designated for state and local transportation funds, and portions of that were designated for the Mirko Association as a government region, and they allocated a portion of that to the town of Fountain Hills. The portion allocated to the town of Fountain Hills is a little over $1,081,000. The funds in this are on a tight timeframe to be used. In fact, the funds are not obligated, which is a technical term meaning approved, have to be redistributed to other cities and then ultimately to other states. The generous thing about the R.A. funds is there is no local government match required for an R.A. project. The problem is getting a project ready to be -- use those funds. The R.A. projects have to meet all of the required federal aid funding. It's very similar to a federal Surface Transportation Fund project in its review and approval The funds are required to be used on a functionally classified roadway, classified as an urban collector or above. In Fountain Hills, that's Shea, Fountain Hills Boulevard, Palisades, Suaro, McDowell Mountain Road, and off the top of my head, I'm not sure about Grande and Golden Eagle. But it's a very limited number of roadways that you can utilize these funds on. Normally, it takes two to four years to get a project designed and ready to bid that is obligated through the federal aid process, and even though ADOT has now taken on consultant teams to manage their projects, who knows whether that's gonna go up or down with the massive amount of projects they're gonna have. The town currently has two projects that are making their way through the federal aid process. One of them is, as you see on the board up there, the Shea Boulevard Climbing Lane, which is a surface transportation project. It runs on Shea Boulevard from Fountain Hills Boulevard to Palisades. It basically adds a third lane, bike lane, and sidewalk with landscaping and turn pockets going up the hill westbound on Shea from Fountain Hills Boulevard to Palisades. The other project is a sidewalk to the middle school project. That's not as far along as the Shea Climbing Lane and basically doesn't require much more than the local minimum match for that project. Staff is recommending that we utilize our allocated R.A. funds for the Shea Climbing Lane project. Basically, our current cost estimate, and we're at the 95 percent design status now, is $2.7 million. We have about $1,076,000 in committed federal STP funding, and add to that our R.A. funding of $1,081,000 leaves a required town matching funds of $546,000. Basically, the Shea Climbing Lane will add the third lane on the uphill section of the road. That's the first place that we anticipate that we will start seeing backups on Shea in the two-lane section of Shea. It's not too big a problem right now, but some of the turn pockets that we will be adding in this project actually are a frequent problem right now. Staff recommends utilizing the town allocated R.A. funding toward the Shea Boulevard Climbing Lane project. Council action is not specifically required on this, but you may certainly take whatever action you would like to.
Good, thank you, Randy. Again, yes, this is the funds coming through MAG, and the sub-allocated portion that didn't go to highways at this time. There are other stimulus funds that may be available perhaps through MAG or through other federal agencies for other projects that are being bounced around, infrastructure projects primarily in our town. But these are the funds that MAG, as a regional council, had to sub-allocate, and we need to turn in a report tomorrow, right?
That is correct, Mayor.
So thank you for bringing these forward. Do you have any questions or comments for staff? Councilmember Dickey. Oh, yeah, let's go ahead and get a --
Is there a motion?
No, let's not do a motion. Just do some questions right now. We may end up with a motion.
We may end up with a motion.
We may end up with a motion, but I think we need dialogue here. Go ahead, Councilmember Dickey.
I just wanted to touch on what you just said about the other origins of some of this possible funding, so that we know that we're not picking something out of all of our projects, which I really appreciated this card that we got from you, Mayor, that I'm sure staff was responsible for putting together of some of the other projects that we have, not only just the town, but also the other entities in town. But we can -- there are other ways besides MAG, so I wanted to make sure that you all knew that. You can get it directly from the federal government through a formula. Then there are competitive grants that we get through the federal government. There's our part of MAG here, and then also some that's gonna be passed through the state government. And I just wanted to take a moment to mention that one of our projects that we talk about in Fountain Hills is a sanitary district project, and we had a little bit of an obstacle with that in that state statute does say right now that we would have to hold an election in order to qualify for some of that. But I wanted you to know that the legislature has an effort, and the reason I gave you this copy, it's a draft budget that's -- it's a public document, and I don't know that -- I don't think that this will be the final budget by any means, but this is one that came out of the Senate. And on the bottom page, there's a footnote on 105 under the Department of Environmental Quality, and it is an effort to attempt to get districts that are under -- that serve under 50,000 people exempt from the requirement for a vote. And I don't know that that would bring our project up in a significant way, but at least it takes it from something that isn't even eligible. So I wanted to mention those two things, that in picking this or in considering this, there are other options, as you know, Mayor.
Good, thank you very much, Councilmember Dickey. The stimulus is -- and the stimulus act is, whether you are for it or against it, did get signed, and Fountain Hills is working its best to address any funding that may be able to benefit our community. So we've developed a task force, a volunteer task force, and that's working with staff to keep their eyes and ears open for other opportunities out there through the various means, and most of the federal agencies are still formulating their guidelines, and in light of -- oh, thank you. In light of the AIG discussions, they're probably taking a little more care in their guidelines, so -- but they'll be trickling out at various times, so the volunteer group is working with staff to make sure that we uncover and solicit those items that make sense, particularly infrastructure items, roads, and other items, and we're working in conjunction with other agencies in our town, the sanitary district and school district are all sharing information so that we can best benefit one another. We do have someone from the public on this item, Bev?
Yes, Mayor Robert Deppi.
Okay, I'm one of those four that was against the stimulus package, but I'll make my piece anyhow. You got a million bucks. Where do you spend it? I don't know what the criteria is and everything else, but I guess I'd rather see the money go elsewhere if it possibly could. I've been hearing you people for five years saying Suaro Boulevard is our oldest street and in need of major repairs. I know it -- I believe it costs over $5 million, or we're projecting over $5 million for that. Can we do part of it rather than do the Shea piece of it? If it can be used for facility, I'd much rather see it go for a fire station than expanding on Shea also. Just my thoughts.
Thank you very much. Randy, I have a couple of questions for you on the Shea project. If I recall, didn't we have a 70-30 grant on that one, or is that the lower section of Shea?
That's the other section of Shea you're referring to, Mayor, in the red on the map over there.
Okay.
That's the Shea riding, and that's a half-sent sales tax or MAG RTP project. That's also proceeding, and it's at about 15 percent level design right now. That's not a federal aid project, and it's not being designed as a federal aid project, so it'd be quite difficult to convert that to meet the requirements of this program.
And can you go into a little more detail on why you're suggesting the Shea Climbing Lane project? What are the benefits of this? And along the lines of what Councilmember Dickey said, I think there's other projects that we may look to get funding from other sources that may have a good chance from those other sources, that we may not want to apply funds through this allocation from MAG, and that's why you may be going after this one.
Mayor, the federal stimulus package is a very broad package, includes lots of different categories of items, as Councilwoman Dickey was pointing out, several of them earlier. The portion that I've referred to is strictly a transportation section. It's projects that are fundable under the Federal Surface Transportation Program projects, which this is already a federal surface transportation project. The -- I think timing's going to be a crucial issue on doing projects with this money. The lag time getting projects through the design process, through the ADOT process is a real long process, and it's at least the question in my mind whether you can actually meet the deadlines if you aren't well along in the process. We're at the 95 percent level on this project. It does require a substantial amount more funding than we have currently in surface transportation grant funds, and certainly, I think we all recognize that Suaro, the condition of Suaro is going downhill, and I would certainly recommend that we will be pursuing other federal aid funds on the Shea Climbing Lane in the near future, basically MAG closeout funds for this year. If we are so fortunate as to be selected for those funds, we'll be back to the town council and similar to tonight in saying, you know, what -- how would you like to utilize those funds? I think at that time, the using a portion of those, well, using whatever is available on Suaro Boulevard would be a very good second choice, if you would. Obviously, it won't do all of Suaro Boulevard, to resurface all of Suaro Boulevard, we're only doing a small portion of it, but --
Appreciate it. Any other comments? Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you. Randy, you were talking about the time constraints on the money. Is there a certain date that it has to be used by?
Councilwoman Hanson, that's correct. Let me refer to my notes to get the date straight here. The funds have to be obligated by November 30, or Mirko Association and governments will be reallocating those to other projects at that time. The federal requirement, it actually isn't until March 2. Actually, my notes said February 17, but the -- they had revised that later on. It's March 7 of 2010, the federal requirement. But if we don't have a project obligated by November 30, then MAG's going to be looking to redistribute the money.
So we're fairly certain that we'll be able to meet those deadlines for this particular project?
Mayor, Councilwoman Hanson, yes, we should. In fact, our funding is this fiscal year, which ends September 30, so we really need to have it obligated by September 30.
Okay.
And we do fully believe that we can do that. We're at the 95 percent level, so.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Councilmember Lejeune?
Randy, this specific money could not be used for a fire station because it's dedicated primarily for transportation projects. Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilwoman Lejeune, that's absolutely correct. There is other portions of the federal program that can be used for a fire station, and I believe we are researching and looking into those. believe we are researching and looking into those. I'm not involved in that, so...
Mayor, I have another question for Randy. It's also my understanding from what I've learned from staff, as well as what I've read, is that the projects need to be pretty much shovel-ready. And Shea is chosen because it is shovel-ready. We've done design work, so forth and so on. And although Saguaro is a good target, that probably would not qualify for this piece of money, wouldn't it? In that it is not shovel-ready?
Yeah. Now, shovel-ready is kind of a...
A broad term.
A broad term, yeah. We're at the 95% design level on the Shea Climbing Lane. We're pretty close to being there.
Let me back into that, because I'm being asked a lot of questions and some of the same comments that we received this evening from a citizen, that Saguaro, are we in a position right now to do Saguaro, in that we haven't done the design work?
Yeah, that's correct. We're at ground zero on Saguaro.
So to clarify, it's a process of, we don't use it for a fire station because this is transportation dollars. Saguaro doesn't qualify because we're not meeting the criteria with respect to design criteria. Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilwoman Legay, I really don't see how we'd be able to start from ground zero and get a project on the full length of Saguaro, or even, you know, the funding that we have through the process, which is a very laborious process.
And I'm not suggesting that, and I understand exactly what you're saying. I just wanted to clarify that, because there's a great deal of confusion out there, how the money can be used and where it can be used, and I've been asked the same questions from other folks, that why not Saguaro? You've provided a rationale. Saguaro really doesn't qualify at this point in time. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Councilmember Cantino?
I have a question for Julie.
Microphone. Yes, sir. Julie? Thanks.
With this stimulus package, this is something that they haven't done since like the '30s. Were we sitting back, knowing what happened to General Motors, what happened to Chrysler? Is this going to be something that once we're into it, or we're hooked, that it's going to be a situation where they're going to be able to tell us what to do?
Mayor, Councilwoman Cantino, I'll see if I try to answer it. When you say when, they, meaning the federal government, can tell us what to do with the money?
Right.
If I understand it correctly, and Randy could correct me if I'm wrong, this money is actually going to, has to be for a specific project, that we will, that ADOT will do the project, and we will just get the money and give it to ADOT to do. So I'm not sure what they could then require from us after that.
Accepting the money, like General Motors did, and then they went in and fired the head man and changed some of the board members around. Are we going to get into something like that in our government with the money that says, okay, we have you now, you're going to do it this way, this way, and this way?
Mayor, Councilwoman Cantino, I'm not sure what the strings are going to be attached to this funding.
That's what I'm asking.
Right, I'm not sure, you know, I don't know that we've seen the strings yet, or what, I know what the criteria is, but I don't know what they're going to require from us, other than doing the project.
As Finance Director for the Town of Fountain Hills, would you say yes to this project or no?
Well, as Finance Director, we never turn down free money. I think that, you know, without having to match it and to get a project done, that we've got 95% design, and that the opportunity to get it done sooner than later. And we've accepted federal grants before.
No, but this is something different.
Councilmember Cantino, I know our town manager wants to comment.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Councilman, the strings that are attached to this are inherent in the application process itself, in that the project has to qualify under certain criteria, which we've identified. After the money is realized or received by the town, the town will be obligated to report on a 30, 60, and 90-day basis, and then for the next, I think it is, two years, on a periodic basis, we're going to need to file reports that estimate, or give our best estimation of what the financial or fiscal impact, especially as it pertains to job creation, our project has been able to realize. So beyond that, the only strings that we're aware of are those associated with the criteria and the application process, meaning in this case, it has to be a certain type of transportation project. It has to be obligated by a certain date. And then thereafter, we need to report on what the fiscal impacts have been of that project. No other indication or strings or conditions have been communicated to us.
But, I mean, it's money that is actually our money doing our projects, and this is the new venture for everybody in this country with all this stimulus money going around. And as town manager, we're looking at you and Julie and saying, are we going in the right direction, or is there something going to happen?
Well, Mayor and Council, I can tell you that as you utilize this money for this project, that will free up $1.1 million in your capital projects fund, that then you have a little bit more control on, or you can spend in other places. So this project is attractive to the town for several reasons. One, we can utilize the money all on one project. Number two, it's a project that we've already gone, no pun intended, down the road with already, and that we're partnering with a state agency to complete. And so those two factors combined make this a good project for the town. And as I think I've communicated, I'd heartily recommend that we go forward with a project that's already been rated double A by MAG. It also shows the integrity of what we initially communicated to the, to MAG, that this was a project of high priority to us. It was a project that they rated very highly, and it shows that we were willing to go forward with this project.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, you're going around what I'm asking. The government came in to General Motors, gave them stimulus money, and then they came back and they said, well, if you want more stimulus money, you're going to have to change. You're going to have to do this, you're going to have to do that. Does that mean that the government's going to come into us and say, hey, we don't like what you're doing, we want you to change this, and we want you to change that? It's happened with General Motors, it's happened with Chrysler.
And going back to my original answer, no other conditions have been communicated to us.
And I've got, since I was down there at MAG, when we sub-allocated the dollars and came up with the formula, the federal government, in this case, gave the funding to the regional council to distribute, based on the regional council's discretion, which was for arterials and collector roads, that scored well or met the goals of the regional council.
But I guess what I'm saying is, we've got money coming to us that we've never had like this before, ever, in our lifetimes.
Well...
And what strings are going to be attached to this money, once we get this?
This money, this money, it's clear that simply reporting on it over the next two years is what the strings are. There are no other strings attached to this that's come through the regional council, and that's where these funds are coming from, is through the MAG Regional Council, the Maricopa Association of Governments. There is a scoring that we all went through, our staff did a great job there. Had they followed the strict scoring, we would have ended up with more funds, but the MAG Regional Council decided on kind of more of a peanut butter approach, since the needs were so vast across the valley, they decided to go more on a population-based method, which reduced the funds that this town received, and raised, obviously, larger towns' funding levels. This town, our town, obviously, we could consider many of our road projects as dollars needed, not frivolous spending, that's for sure. But the only thing that the MAG was looking for is for what Randy had stated was for larger streets. That's where the money needs to go. Those are the strings attached to it, along with the recording. If there's additional money that comes from other agencies, there may be strings that we need to be aware of, but with this one, those are the strings.
Okay, well, I guess I'm saying that we're treading in untreaded waters, and I hope that the boat doesn't sink and we all go down with it, because I'm very uncomfortable with the stimulus money, the way it's been done so far.
And I think, you know, like I stated, if you're for or against it, the fact is it's happening, it's going out the door, and I think we're doing our best as a community to spend it in a way that we can be proud of, and that we can be confident in, and investing in our roads is probably a...
I hope so.
...good place to do it.
Mayor?
Councilmember Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. And Councilwoman Cantino, just, I just wanted to offer that perhaps what you're talking about with GM, I guess I wouldn't consider that stimulus money. That is, again, we are all experiencing something that we haven't before, but this is a little bit different than that. This is stimulating, hopefully, jobs and the economy in a longer-lasting kind of economic development and a quality of life kind of thing. The other, I believe, has maybe some other motivations for it, and help, well, I don't want to use the word bail out, but that's pretty much what the word is used, so you might be able to look at it a little bit differently also, and that might make you more comfortable.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, if I might?
Yes, Randy.
You know, regardless of what you think about the stimulus package as a whole, this portion of it is dedicated to the Surface Transportation Program. The guidelines, the rules are pretty well set, have been set by FHWA for many years, and so they're, you know, they're known. The town manager advised you of the additional reporting requirements that are required on this, but other than that, it's pretty much the same as a federal aid surface transportation project.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Andrew, we don't need to make a motion on this, correct?
That's correct.
All right, so you've got what you need to file for tomorrow?
Thank you very much, Mayor.
All right, appreciate it. All right, next item is consideration of professional service agreement with Hunt and Caraway Architects Limited in the amount of $114,049.50 for the design of a new fire station. Scott, welcome.
Mayor, council members, good evening. Rather than go through the whole litany of past six years, I'd just like to give kind of a thumbnail review of what has happened over the past six years. Back in 2003, as the town was moving forward to perhaps not build out, but rapidly expanding in the southern, western, southwestern end of town, we realized that we were starting to have response issues. Some of our reports that we receive monthly were showing that we were starting to have some difficulty, not a lot, but starting to have a little bit of difficulty meeting our 90% compliance in the five-minute zone, and it was starting to show up in the eight-minute zone, which is in the rural metro contract. And at that time, if you remember, back in those days, there really wasn't a lot out there in those parts of town, and that's why there was an eight-minute zone. So we started to study and watch the situation and work on it. Several years ago, you know, it was starting to become more apparent by looking at our reports monthly, that, you know, we were pretty much, almost every month, not hitting that 90 percentile that we were obligated to do. So we started to do some research and studies on potential sites within the Town of Fountain Hills to mitigate the issue that was coming up. And one of the things that we used as a criteria on our GIS study and study policy was, we only looked at property that was owned by the Town of Fountain Hills, in hopes to try to keep future costs down and not having to buy property. So overall, in about a two-year period, we looked at approximately 10 sites in the town. Most of those were town-owned, and that did include the north end of the town, because at one work study, several of the council members were concerned that we weren't looking at the north-northwest side of town. So we did start looking at that part of town in our studies also. So over the last couple of years, we've had probably four to six staff summaries that have been submitted to the council. I believe we had two work studies, and I believe we've been in front of council twice in the last year and a half with our methodology on the subject matter, to the point where last year, budget season, we had asked, and you so graciously included in the CIP, about $364,000 for design engineering and architectural work. Well, when we went out to bid last year, we found out that we were able to come in quite a bit cheaper than the $364,000. We came in at the low bid at $114,000 that you see here tonight. So actually, tonight, the way I look at this, is this is just the next step in our methodology to get to the phase of finally putting this fire station in the ground. Obviously, there are several more steps to go before this happens, but this is the next step. One part that's kind of interesting about this step tonight and the near future, as you were talking about stimulus money just prior to my presentation, the federal government has given FEMA $210 million to build non-federal fire stations. Now, it's a little bit different than the type of funding that Randy was describing, because there's not a mathematical formula to this date, or a population-based formula, or a state formula, on how this money is going to be distributed throughout the United States. By giving it to FEMA, and everything that we've heard so far from FEMA, the model that they are going to use is most likely the model that they have been using for the firefighter grants and the safer grants, which are competitive. We will compete for the dollars. They did put one caveat on here, and I believe that no city can receive as it 15, more than $5 million, which is really a lot of money for a fire station, where you look at Scottsdale and Phoenix are building eight to $15 million fire stations. But $5 million is a good cap for us, because we're way under it. Now, we also hear about shovel-ready, and I don't really know what shovel-ready means in a competitive process, that we will compete for, irregardless of what happens tonight. We will compete come this summer, and that's what they're saying, is that that's when the criteria in the competition period will open up to submit for these dollars, and then you will be informed later this year or early in 2010, if you've been selected to receive a grant. However, it's my thought that going into writing this grant, I would like to be on level ground with our communities around here, and that being is that we kind of are quote-unquote shovel-ready. And I don't know if shovel-ready means we own the property. We own the property, and we also have a set of blueprints, we just need the money to build a fire station. I do know for a fact that Phoenix, surprise, Scottsdale, Gilbert, Mesa, do have shovel-ready projects ready to go. And I would like to give us, the town, the opportunity to hopefully compete with our sister cities and communities around here. Is that a guarantee? Absolutely not. But that's just kind of my hope, and again, irregardless of what happens tonight here, we will try to be as competitive as we possibly can in writing this grant, hopefully come summertime. Rather than go any further with this, as I said, this is all about response time. It's all about, in my mind, trying to do it as cost-effectively as we possibly can by providing the best service to our customers, our citizens in this town. And that's, again, why we try to stick with town-owned property, and we feel that this is just the next step of this process before we complete the process sometime in the, hopefully in near future. So tonight, I stand before you, ready and willing to answer any of your questions that you may have, and seeking your direction.
Thank you very much, Chief. First, look for a motion to approve the professional services agreement with Hunt and Caraway Architects Limited in the amount of $114,049.50 for the design of Fire Station Two.
May I ask, come on?
And a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Bev, anyone from the public?
Yes, Mayor, two speaker cards, Richard Kloster and then Bert Fisher.
Thank you. Welcome, Richard.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. It's a pleasure to be here, but most of the groundwork has already been laid with the discussion that preceded my arrival here at the podium. I think Scott, the fire chief, has packaged it pretty nicely in terms of shovel-ready, and it would be a shame if we didn't pass the plans to be implemented, to get going, and find either money through the stimulus package, or because we get stimulus money in some other area, free up money to build that actual fire station. money in some other area, free up money to build that actual fire station. We've been through this before. I don't want to repeat too much, but I'll be brief. I want to take just a moment to introduce a few of my colleagues. These are all board members, Eagle Mountain Homeowner Association, Soon Elson gave up some time, Rick Campbell, Bert Fisher, of course, you know, Madeline Berg, and Ron Warner. We're all critically interested because of the two tragedies that have occurred in Eagle Mountain. We just don't think, in good conscience, the leaders of the community, you folks, can ignore the fact that those tragedies happened. And it happened partially because of not being able to get there in time, as Scott has already identified. Now, I've talked to a couple of other communities, namely Fire Rock and Cresview, who were on that perimeter as we all went through before in deciding why we needed to move the fire station from where it is now. So I'm not going to dwell on that. But it would just seem to avoid any further tragedies, that that would be the highest priority you would have: safety, protection of the citizens. And I just think that it goes beyond logic to say that you would, you know, go for something that's pleasure or recreational, when in front of you, you have a major issue in this community. And we look to you as the leaders to recognize that and make a decision accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kloster. Mr. Fisher?
I'll try not to be redundant. Again, Mr. Mayor, council members, I'd like to point out that this is a critical safety issue. We are way beyond the response times. The fire we had, the record says it was nine minutes and some seconds. That's wheels down. I had three phone calls from residents when I was the president that two verified 13 minutes. That's starting with the 911 call, not wheels down. And one was 16 minutes. I threw out the 16 minutes, because the other two were within eight seconds of each other. That's clearly unacceptable. We did have a death of one of our neighbors that suffered a heart attack a few months ago, partially because of a 911 problem. They gave her somebody that spoke Spanish, and she didn't. That's not a fire department issue, but there's other things that affect response time. So we can't have that kind of leeway in the fire department wheels-down response time. Just to give you some idea, it's not just the residents of the three areas that Mr. Kloster talked about. And you know from the past, when I give you numbers, I always do my homework. I don't just pull them out of thin air. I am a CPA, and I think I know how to count pretty good. But when you consider the number of people that visit the shops, the 38,250 rounds of golf at Eagle Mountain Country Club, I don't even know what they are at Fire Rock, the residents in Cresview, Fire Rock, and Eagle Mountain, and the hotel guests that come every year, the people that go through the Fries that aren't otherwise counted, you're talking about 148,000 potential people, not just residents, that would need the assistance of a responsive fire department. That's where that number came from on the card, Bev. I wasn't dreaming when I said I represented 148,000 people. I hope you appreciate that and understand it. We appreciate your support, and we hope you don't delay this for any kind of money other than our own. Hopefully, we can get it reimbursed, but that should not stop this project. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Fisher. Any questions for staff from council, place Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Scott, could you speak to the law of averages and how you came to the conclusion of locating the station at this current site?
Well, we really wanted to try to take the human piece out of it. You know, I didn't want to stand in front of you and say, "I, Scott Legreca, with 38 years in the fire service, declare that we can't get there." Because what does that really mean? Not much of anything. So fortunately, you know, by following our exception reports that we get on a monthly basis, and the exception reports that I receive is that whenever our companies can't get to an address or location in the town within that five-minute or that eight-minute parameter that is spelled out in the contract, I get a report, and I look at it. Sometimes it's five seconds, 10 seconds. Sometimes it's four minutes, five minutes. And those four minutes and five-minute ones are the ones that catch my attention, and I immediately look at those every month to determine what happened. And I ask the captains, "Tell me what happened. Why did it take you five minutes longer than eight minutes?" And a lot of times, in these various areas here, it's pure geography. You know, the stations weren't built to cover those areas 10 years ago, because there was nothing there. So fortunately, a computer program, a GIS program, came out that was introduced to us through the Phoenix Fire Department, and through our relationship with Scottsdale, they agreed to run the initial models for us, and then give it to us where our technology can tweak the system. And what we did is, we told the program, "Here's our GIS file. Here's our speed limit overlay. This is where our station locations are at. We want to be able to get to a location within five minutes 90% of the time." And so the computer, instead of just taking, drawing circles like they used to do with ISO, a two-and-a-half-mile circle, the computer comes out with a polygon that shows you how far you can get at that location that you gave it in five minutes 90% of the time. So that's the model that we use, or the program we use. And I believe most of you probably saw the charts that we used on that, and that's how we based it on. And what we did is, to try to make it even less controversial, you know, we looked at it, "Okay, we're only going to do the speed limit. We're going to do five miles over the speed limit, and we're going to do 10 miles over the speed limit." Well, we felt by just doing the speed limit that that probably wasn't really accurate or truthful, because we're going to do more than the speed limit in most areas of town. But we did feel that 10 miles over the speed limit was probably too much, and we probably would be inviting questions from various groups and people on how we're justifying going 10 miles over the speed limit. So we settled on five miles as probably a defendable speed for our study. And then we just plugged in our locations in the study, and the computer gave us the polygons to show us how far we could go, what we could reach in five minutes 90% of the time. And so anything on the outskirts of those polygon lines decreased the response time as you went closer to the fire station. So the perimeter of the polygon was the maximum distance at that five minutes. And one other thing, the five minutes, we predicated that on the sprinkler ordinance. Most fire departments strive to get a response time at four minutes 90% of the time, but we felt that this community had such a huge investment in the residential sprinkler ordinance that we should be rewarded some way, somehow, we meaning the community, for being so progressive in passing a residential sprinkler ordinance. So we felt very comfortable with the five minutes. And again, the five minutes was the very perimeter, perifia of that polygon.
And Scott, could you speak, maybe for the public's benefit, how many different sites we looked at? I know there was quite a few of them. Some of them weren't even town-owned sites.
Well, we started off, we looked at our two current sites as our base, so we had something to compare. And we also, we looked at the old ISO ratings, where we took and actually drew the circles to show where the, and which ISO still uses today, and that's insurance organization that sets commercial and residential rates. And from there, we started, again, looking at sites that were town-owned, would not have issues with changing zoning or ordinances, hillside protection, if you will, and that type of things. Again, try to make this site as user-friendly, and to make it comply with what a citizen would be asked to do if he or she were to build a property in the town, that we're going to try to mirror the same laws that we would ask the citizens, and not have to come in front of you and ask you to waive an ordinance in order to accommodate us. So those were some of the criterias that we used. And sitting down with the town engineer, who has intimate knowledge of the town and town-owned properties, we started picking sites to see where we could potentially put a station at. And yes, we did look at one site in particular that had a lot of interest to us, because it was flat as a board, was right across the street from Palatial Estates, where they filled in the lake. But as one could imagine, that we probably would have had a lot of issues by wanting to build a fire station right on the golf course, and basically in the backyard of those homes. And then in talking to the engineers, seeing that that lake was filled in, and most likely was not filled in, and I'm going to probably butcher this, but it wasn't engineered to be filled in, where they compacted every three feet. So it would either have had to been dug out and recompacted with an engineering study, or pylons would have had to have been put in there to support the fire station. So it probably would have become economically unfeasible to do that, but we just felt the struggle to try to get that piece of property would have been too great. And again, trying to keep the council as neutral as we possibly could in this decision on where we put the station, because irregardless of where we go, somebody's going to probably have a little bit of an issue with that station being wherever. So we tried to mitigate any backlash.
And lastly, Scott, and I'll let the mayor have the floor again, if you could speak to the idea of moving the station so that we've got an even number of calls, or we evened out the calls that were going to, each station was responding to?
Yes, sir. And again, that falls into not only the response time parameters, but currently, Station One up here, in the middle of town, is doing around 250 calls a month. Station Two is doing about 50 calls a month. So we're putting a heavy load on Station One, whereas we moved this station up in that corridor. And quite frankly, Shea kind of gives us a real springboard to get onto Palisades and Fountain Hills Boulevard, and to head back to the east end of town. We can start to bring down some of the call volume on Station One, which is going to allow them to bring down their response time exceptions, because they're not going to be out quite as much as what they're going to be, as what they're being sent out to right now.
So that should better Station One's averaging?
Yes, sir.
To hit in the five minutes at 90% of the time.
That's correct, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Scott. So I'll be coming from the point of view that I trust the integrity of these standards that you're talking about, as far as response times, as far as averages. We all know that not every firefighter is going to be there 24 hours a day. You're using the standards and the practices that are used pretty much nationwide, correct?
Councilman, yes, correct.
Okay, so I trust that, and I believe that, and so I'll just maybe go into some of this financial stuff that we're talking about, the FEMA grant, speaking to people at FEMA, and knowing that, yes, shovel-ready, and it is a competitive grant. There is a timeline, and you can actually get on a newsletter where they're going to tell you when they start to formulate these criteria. And some of the grants maybe, may be starting to report on May 20. Some of them are actually having recipients of grants starting to respond and report over the summer. So there's no way to know. It might not be till July, till they get the criteria, but we could get it before that. The mandate for these projects are that they are investing in projects that create jobs immediately. From the point of view of estate agencies within Arizona, that the idea of being ready does have meaning, and it means designed. And I know that the state agencies would answer that it absolutely matters, if you're in a competitive situation, how close you are ready to go. Other, some of the other financial implications, some of them that you spoke about, this is over $200,000 less than we thought when we looked at this and approved it. The last time we had a work study with the deputy manager, we talked a little bit about putting some of these projects off, and I think that we probably came up with maybe some of them. But one of the things I asked her, and I asked on purpose, was that, well, what would happen if we didn't remove any of our projects? And so obviously, we did take some of them off, but she did say that, what will these things cost in the future? And I do seriously believe right now that doing this now will save us money in the future. It does not obligate us to build this next year if we indeed don't get the stimulus, but it's not going to expire. It's not like it's a plan that's throwing money down the drain to get. I think it will give us a really good, better chance of getting the stimulus funding, but I don't think that it would be useless if we still can't build it for a couple of years. I think the, having the ambulance at Fries is a great stopgap, very good idea, and a safe thing to be doing right now, but I certainly think of that as temporary, because, again, we go back to these averages, and maybe there aren't 100 fires a year as compared to how many ambulance calls there are, but there are fires. And we need to be prepared for those, and I think that this, again, takes a step in that direction. And if we do get this 1.1 million for the lane, then again, then that does put that back into the capital projects, which we said if we spent everything, we'd be spending about $2 million of the 10. So that, you know, I don't think that we ought to allow ourselves to not move forward on some of these things if we feel that we can. Let me see, there were a couple of other things about funding. Oh, the other thing was what you mentioned about the uneven use of the two different stations, and I think that's something that's important and needs to be, that's a resource item also. So at this time, I would hope that we could move forward with this.
Could I interject two thoughts? First, I would be remiss in not saying that, over the years, the council has been extremely supportive of the fire department and our response time issues. A, by passing the historic residential sprinkler ordinance in 1996, by passing an ordinance requiring preemption on not only our traffic lights, but our gates going into the community. That was huge. Allowing us to split our manpower at Station One to have a dynamic response, so we could handle three EMS calls, by supporting the purchase of the new fire engine for the south side of town, which was purely built for that part of town. So overall, oh, and I would be remiss in not recognizing the Fries concept, and Fries' concept did come from Councilman Ledger. Quite frankly, we didn't quite think about that, and so he challenged us to think outside of the box and gave us that point to look at, and it appears that's going to come to fruition. And again, that's part of the teamwork that I think that we've shown over the past 13 years that I've been here. One last point on the financial end of it. Again, assuming that the FEMA grants will follow suit to how they operate now, there could most likely be a 10% match. They may waive that this time for the stimulus, but in a community our size, there's always been a 10% match on a firefighter's grant. So if this money was allocated for this project, that would be a large hunk of our 10% match towards the $1.5 or $2 million that we would ask for in this grant. Obviously, you know, we could probably assign a cost on the property that the town owns, and use that as the rest of the match, or all the match, or part of the match. Don't know. But I just wanted to throw that out, that this money here could have another purpose of potentially matching a match.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, questions on here? Councilmember Cantino?
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions for Scott, but I first wanted to find out from the council. Have we decided on a site? When did we decide?
Thank you.
When I was gone?
No. No. This would be one way to decide on a site, I would suspect. And that's a good, I think, a question related to that would be to Scott, is, would the design be site-specific? Actually, I suspect the answer is yes, but...
Yes.
Would the designs be able to be adapted to different locations?
Mayor, Councilman Cantino, at this point, no. Mainly because of the... Mainly because of the topography. The inside of the station would be about 99% the same no matter where we put it because we're looking at pretty much a 5,000-square-foot building with the interior footprint being the same no matter where we put it, but depending that the ground was flat, somewhat flat, hilly, or whatever is going to affect the outside of the footprint of the building. So this set of plans, I would think, and I'm not an architect, but I don't think that on the site that we have been looking at for the better part of a year now would probably fit anywhere else. It could probably be modified, in my simple mind, maybe not, but I would have to say this is pretty much site-specific.
Okay, I guess what I was wondering about was that, I did, first of all, I didn't know we decided on where a site's going to be. I mean, I wasn't advised of that, so I didn't know. The other thing is, with the architects like that we have today and with the disc that we can put everything on, a fire station's a fire station's a fire station, isn't it? And if it isn't, can we take the drawings that we had like on Two, Station Two, modify those and save ourselves a lot of money because of the technology that we can do through computers?
Well, in a perfect world, a fire station is a fire station is a fire station would hold true, but it really doesn't hold true. And we are not looking at building a Taj Mahal fire station and as a basis, we took the interior footprint of Station Two down at Suaro and used that as our base. But a lot of things have changed. You know, there's a few things that we like about that station. There's a few things that we don't like about that station. And we're looking to build a fire station that is extremely user-friendly for a Fire Department operation, which is basically a garage and a living quarters. But again, it has to be functional. It has to last 50 years or longer. It has to look decent in the community, especially where we're proposing to put a fire station in the gateway of the town, wanting it to make it look like it belongs in the neighborhood and not some industrial building that would certainly cause issues with our citizens. So again, that being an architect, I don't know if we could take the plans from Station Two and dust them off and go out to bid.
The only reason I say this is because I've talked to some architects and say there's a lot of times we can do that. And he says the plans aren't that old for what the station is now. And if you have to add something, subtract something, build a wall in, I'm just looking away to try to save money. And with the technology that we have today, everything is done on the computer.
The architect that we selected is in the audience tonight, so I don't know if you wish to bring him to the podium or not, but I don't really think it's really all that simple to just take 15-year plans and, and again, you're talking to the wrong person. I tell you a lot about fire trucks, but...
Mayor, I wouldn't mind your question.
All right, the architect?
Yes.
I think that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Hunt?
Pardon me. We have been involved in fire stations for a number of years now, and we have done stations that were initially designed to be site-adapted multiple times. If a station hasn't been designed that way, it is more difficult to. Our experience, we did a very early site-adapt station plan for the city of Scottsdale. It has now been built in about five locations. The closest one to you is the Rio Montanea Park Fire Station.
Mr. Hunt, would you mind pulling that microphone? Thank you very much.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
How far back do you want?
That's perfect. You're up to now.
And it was designed to be site-adapted. The structure can change a little bit, but in a site-adapt where you retain appearance, you do not change structure. It can be done. There is also, with another architect's plans, an ethical issue to discuss too, taking somebody else's plans and changing those. There would have to be negotiation. There would have to be release from that other architect too to look at those or to work with those.
Thank you. So it doesn't sound like that's done today. It doesn't sound like that's, is this a realistic thing that's done or not?
It is not realistic to take somebody else's to do it. We have designed specifically for that. I have a fire station that's ready to bid down in Casa Grande right now that is designed to be that, site-adapt over and over again, but it was designed that way.
Okay. That's helpful. Councilmember Dickey, you have a question for our architect?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Hunt. So would it be proper or okay for our chief or some of our staff to talk to some of the folks that use in Glendale and Scottsdale, some of the other places that you've obviously put a lot of stations up around Avondale, I think, and others? Is that something that they would do to see how those designs would adapt to something that they might want?
Yes, and I think they have talked to some of them before they, or after they called us for an interview. And, you know, it gets back. We know that they were called and talked to, yes.
And you are LEED certified then, or you know how to build a LEED building?
I am a licensed architect in the state of Arizona, yes.
I thought I read that it was LEED certification?
Oh, we do have, we are LEED-approved and we do some facilities. Matter of fact, we have designed for the National Guard a fire station up at Camp Navajo just outside of Flagstaff, and it will be the first LEED silver fire station built by the National Guard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, questions?
No, I don't have any more for Mr. Hunt.
Okay.
But I do have one for you.
Thanks, sir.
I'm really upset with the council that we, I didn't know anything about going to wherever you're going and I haven't had it mentioned yet.
I think that's kind of, I would assume, and maybe town manager could speak to this, is by looking at this site, by looking at design for this site.
When did we actually vote on this to have it at that site?
We have not.
Okay, then you're telling me we are.
No, I think this would be an effort to move forward on that site.
Well, I want the Fire Department, but I think we talked about two or three different ones. Now, when the town manager talked to us to begin with, we talked about Shea, but he's given us two or three different sites and he's never come back and said one thing about where we're going to build it. Now, all of a sudden tonight, I'm saying we're coming back to Shea. Nobody's told anybody on this council. Maybe you guys have, but I haven't. I'm upset with the council. You're not telling us what's going on.
I don't know, I don't think I've been involved in any other meetings without you there.
Well, who's deciding where it's going to go?
We are, tonight. We are, if we make, if we move on this...
But if we don't want that site tonight and we got another site, I want to see a Fire Department, but we discussed three sites, three sites, and you haven't said anything to us. Where are, where is the loop or à la loop circles that we have in this town?
Let me, let me see if the town manager can speak to the process at all. Councilmember Cantino?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The major presentation that Scott made, that the chief made to you presented a number of options. I think there were eight or so options. He made a very clear recommendation at that time to you that the Shea location would be the location that would, that would fit his needs, that fit the polygon model. For convenience of comparison, he included an analysis of all the stations and he showed that that was the station that met the criteria set for the 90% five-minute response time. During, before this meeting, we have came into some information relative to another possible site on Fountain Hills Boulevard. Our impression was as a staff that no other locations, because of the criteria that Chief Agreca had set, because of the studies that indicated what the ideal site, where the ideal site was going to go, were under any serious consideration. So we have the site on Shea as a recommendation to you. We did find a site on Fountain Hills Boulevard that we brought to, was brought to our attention and we brought it to your attention as a possibility. Ran the polygons on the Fountain Hills Boulevard site and they showed a similar response time as what we would expect to realize on Shea. Again, at this point, Shea is still the site that is being recommended by the Fire Department. However, there were certain attractive features associated with the Fountain Hills site. The one feature of that site that wasn't so attractive is that the town did not own it. So we sought some advice relative to what our move would be, and in fact, the town attorney and myself had had some meetings to feel out the possibilities of acquiring that property. There was a clear indication given to us after that meeting that such a purchase would not be desirable at this time. And that's what we went away with. At this point, we did hold a meeting here to review our capital projects calendar and went through a number of those capital projects, offering recommendations on which projects we could hold or eliminate or that we should go forward on. One of those was the presentation of a possible design on a fire station. It's been programmed from the beginning of this budget at about $360,000. The bid is coming at $114,000, and our recommendation was to you at that time and felt like you had approved of that, that we would go forward in making a presentation to you relative to a possible design of a fire station. Again, from the very first presentation, our perceptions as staff and we thought were pretty clear that Shea was the recommended site. So when we presented the Fountain Hills Boulevard alternative and that didn't seem to, as they take a position above the Shea location, we have continued to default to a recommendation for the Shea location. So to this point, we apologize for any kind of misunderstanding, but we have, we've understood that from our last meeting that we had regarding the Fountain Hills site, that we were defaulting back to the Shea location.
What about the Sun Ridge location?
About the what?
Sun Ridge.
Now, the Sun Ridge location was presented to you as a possible location for a third fire station. It is not one that would satisfy the needs being answered by the second fire station, which is on Shea. This is one that we communicated to you would be considered in the future. At some time, the town wanted to move in the direction of a third fire station, but certainly doesn't relate to this one. And also, a discussion of that site was discussed in the context of other subject matter that I can't bring up here in the interest of brevity and other interests, but certainly, what we want to do is be sensitive to what you want us to do. If you want us to have some more discussions on the Shea site, we don't want to rush your hand or push your hand on the Shea location. If you want to talk a little bit more about it, we're happy to do that. We want to go at a speed that's comfortable for you, but with your understanding that there was no intention that we not communicate information on this.
Well, I guess the thing that bothered me was the idea that everybody shook their heads. Yes, they decided on a station. You know, you've talked to us about the Shea to start with, and then we talked all about these other ones, all around the ring around the Rosie, and we come right back to the Shea. We could have had this station shovel-ready by the time we get everything going. I guess I'm disappointed in the council members as well as the town manager for not keeping the council members updated on everything that goes on. That's why I'm saying we're out of the loop.
Mayor, Councilmember Cantino? You know, the, I had forgotten that we did address it again when we looked at the capital improvement plan one more time, and it was related to the, to the fire station. I mean, it was not specifically, I think it was listed as a fire station, but I don't think it was specific to location. As far as I understand, the fire station location for, if we were to relocate fire station to Two on Suaro, to the, at a location at or near Shea to serve the needs where those response times are longer than what we're targeting, the, there was a location up on Palisades that was not seriously considered. There was a location that was later brought on Fountain Hills Boulevard, and then there was the one location here on Shea. There are really only three I seriously considered project, or locations there. And then some of the other one, the other one you mentioned is not a relocation of this fire, was not for relocation, Station Number Two relocation. There were other locations that were studied, I think up to eight of them, but there were only a couple that were really seriously considered as viable. There were two on Shea, one on Palisades, and then later one on Fountain Hills Boulevard, and then, of course, the old one up at the end of King's Tree. So I think one thing is, it's, it's pretty clear, and as far as you saying we're all shaking our heads, I mean, I can't agree with that. I think we're...
No, you were shaking your head. Yes, I will agree with that.
Well, I mean, my point is I'm not agreeing potentially with the placement of this location. I'm taking things in just as you are, Councilmember Cantino.
The thing is, there's a lot of potential for all kinds of safety hazards coming across those two lanes. I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about my firefighters. I'm concerned about a lot of things that happen out there, but I think to discuss this and say we're going to go on Shea, I think it's wrong to be so strong-headed about this. If I'm, you're shaking your head, no. Am I wrong, Rick?
Councilmember Cantino? Let me get a couple more comments from the other councilmembers and then we'll get, ask Rick to respond. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. There's some pretty, pretty serious accusations being thrown around here, Dennis, and I think you just misinterpreted what's been happening.
No, I don't think they're accusations.
Let me finish.
That's okay.
Thank you. November 6th, we had a presentation of eight different sites, November 6th of last year. We had a presentation from Scott of eight different sites that they reviewed, doing their polygon to decide, for us to decide or to get, for them to give us their recommendation and us to give them their nod of where would be the most, where would be the best suited site to move Station Two. That site was determined to be the Fountain Hills location. Now, since that time, and then I think on the 15th, we got some more information, but since that time, we've had Scott look at a couple of different sites, maybe just moving the location up Shea or down Shea. It seemed to work still with the polygram, but we were still committed to the Shea site. Then a privately-owned lot that was owned by MCO came to us and we discussed that. That got nowhere, and in that meeting, we were back to the Shea site. So for you to say that you weren't involved in picking the Shea site, we were all involved in it. We didn't particularly vote on it, but we gave Scott the nod and we gave the town manager the nod to move forward with that site. So I take exception to the fact that you're accusing us of doing something behind your back. That's not what's happened. I think you're just a little confused.
Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Oshambo and other councilmembers, I would appreciate comments back to me, if you would, please. Vice, I'm sorry, Councilmember Dickey, did you have something? Here, Councilmember, does he have another hand over there? Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you. Oh, boy, this is fun. There is one issue that does concern me about the Shea site. I'm not opposed to the fire station issue at all, but I'm really having trouble supporting that site when we've heard in a public meeting and I have heard from other resources that a fire station in that site could very negatively impact the possible resort development. And that's a grave concern for me because that would be very big for the town.
Appreciate it. I will, if I could speak to process for council, is that when this agenda comes out on Friday, please review it as quickly as you can. If you are not comfortable with something which is, happens pretty regularly, we can adjust the agenda so that folks are comfortable with what's coming forward. So... So, that goes for all councilmembers and then contact me as quickly as possible and we will see to a change of the agenda if we're not comfortable or we think things are out of place or out of order or you're not comfortable. So, that goes, that obviously goes for everybody. That's, I'm always available for that. Councilmember Legay.
It's, I'm going to start someplace that I was planning on starting an hour ago, so let me see if I can collect myself. With regard to the conversation that's, that's transpiring, it has been a long process and the captain, excuse me, chief, fire chief and assistant Randy, have been discussing this publicly in, in meetings for, for some time now and we had this discussion during the budget. Some of us had approved the design, others didn't. At that time, it was never about supporting public safety, it was about cost, it was about recognizing that we had a capital projected deficit in the 50 millions of dollars and anyhow, we've kind of gone around and around. We've had many, many presentations, but cutting to the chase, my perspective on the concerns that have been voiced by Councilman Cantino, and I can understand where he's coming from, is pretty simple for me. What we're looking at tonight is an agenda item, which is a recommendation from staff to engage in a service agreement to build a fire station at a certain location. I have not made a decision on that location. I don't think anyone in the council has made a decision on that location. Somehow through the process of elimination and the circle games we've been playing with this, the town manager put, from my perspective, a stake in the ground, paired with conversations with Chief Lagreca who has recommended this site for a really long time. And I come in here this evening basically saying, okay, it's our decision to accept this service agreement or not. And because this has been such a, an issue that's kind of just torn me all apart, I'm an advocate of public safety, I realize the issues up in Eagle Mountain, I know several people up there, I spend time up there. When we looked at this whole issue, we, I looked at it from a problem-solving perspective and said, okay, 90% of our calls up there are, are anywhere in fact are emergency. Therefore, we went to an interim solution, fries, and we have to credit our, our chief for stepping up and basically saying, yeah, there's room for improvement in our response time. At the other side of that, our, our folks do a tremendous job. There were, there have been some exceptions with response time. I happen to live in a neighborhood that's, well, I have some friends that live in a neighborhood that are probably within one minute of a fire station and a house burned down there because all fires are different and all circumstances are different. The fire station could have been across the street from this house and it still would have been total. So, I'll dispense from, you know, all of my emotion, but just, I'm just trying to cut to the chase and be objective here. I came in here this evening, I came in here this evening looking at a contract that has been put before us by staff, prepared by Fire Chief Lagreca, he's made his presentation. Our town manager has pushed this forward in, in consultation with the mayor, this was put on the agenda. So, I very diligently looked at this and I spent a lot of time on the contract and I learned a lot. I learned that the site by reading this agenda item was Shea Boulevard. Frankly, I wasn't sure either prior to reading the packet. I also read that there's a projected price. I wasn't exactly sure on that either. So, there's a lot of information in here. So, I think that if we get back to the agenda item and agree on it or disagree on it, up or down on it, I think that's kind of where we're at right, right now. And if I was not in favor of this location, perhaps I would vote against this. If I was in favor of this location, perhaps I would vote in favor of it. I'm not in favor as I was and, and my good friends out in Eagle Mountain know very well where I stand on this. It's always been about cost for me and that's why we came up with an interim solution, life-saving, first responders, EMT, paramedics, property, second responders, they'll get there hopefully within a reasonable, reasonable time period. However, I must admit, I'm not a proponent of, of all that's going on with respect to the politics and the political ideology that surrounds stimulus, but there's a tremendous opportunity here with respect to stimulus. So, I kind of went from, let's do fries, let's put the fire station on hold because I really don't think it's affordable. When I mean that, I don't want to slight public safety. We have two fire stations and they're very functional and they do a very good job. We do have some issues that we need, need to improve upon. So, as we look at stimulus, that put me back on the fence. So, I'd like to look at this from two perspectives, well, from my point of view, which is that is, I didn't, you know, is, is location an issue? Do we need to go back to the drawing board and spend more time on that? If that's the case, then perhaps we should table and, and get back to that. If there's a comfort level with location, then I'd like to spend a little more time talking about the contract. What's the real cost, direct cost, indirect cost? Tell me more about the stimulus, what's the timeline, what's the probability of the timeline? What's the architectural's timeline? Can we look at the possibility of agreeing on this contract contingent on the, the award of the stimulus package? Can we agree on the contract contingent on completing phase one of this contract, which is the site investigation? I mean, there's just, there's a lot of ways to be looking at this and I'm kind of listening to my colleagues and trying to land someplace that if we, for example, felt comfortable with the location, but we didn't feel comfortable with the dollars and we thought the stimulus was a good idea, do we look at this particular contract and basically say, okay, can we get creative with it? Can we get creative with it? There's no guarantee who can get stimulus money, spending $114,000 is a lot of money. Could we get creative with it? But I, I don't, that's where I was going to come from tonight, but my sense is I'm not sure we're ready to go there, Mayor. I still think there's some consternation. I think there's perhaps some dialogue that needs to happen with respect to site location. So, thank you. And I apologize to everyone here and everyone in the public, but this has been in my noodle for about a year and, and that's about this much of my thought on the process.
Thank you, Councilmember Legay. Councilmember Cantino?
Yes, I go, I'll go along with what Councilman Legay said. I, I think that we're all in it, we're trying to get it done. It's getting to the place where we want to get it done, we want to get it up and I agree, but I think that we ought to sit back and take a look, kind of slow down a little bit and do it. If we can go ahead with some of these things that he can have a fire station that can be adapted to different places, that they can do it in tech, through technology, then let's just do it. But my whole point is, we, I, I feel like that, that it didn't say anything tonight in my book about where the place was going to go and that's why I was so confused when we're talking about Shea Boulevard.
Thank you, Councilmember Cantino. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Since we were talking about stimulus money or Councilman Legay brought it up, I was doing some figuring and on the previous Shea climbing lane project, we're going to get a grant that'll free up $1,081,614. If we had this project shovel-ready and we got that FEMA grant, that would free up one, say it's one and a half million dollars, because that seems to be the number that's floating around, that would free up $1.5 million of our capital projects. And on top of that, we had budgeted and we're saving about $250,000 on the design stage of this particular project. When added to that, would you, give you a grand total of $2,837,614 that we could free up? Now, we've all heard talk about Swarro Boulevard. That's a four-plus million dollar project. That would go a long ways to help them do Swarro Boulevard instead of going to the voters for bond override or for a bond. So, when I look at these projects, I try to take everything into consideration. In my mind, after the November presentation that we had, Shea Boulevard was always the site unless we could prove to ourselves we had a better site and I, and I thought we went down that road and, and interviewed several different sites. Shea Boulevard, that particular site, Scott, can you tell me how far it is to the nearest
As the crow flies, I believe the closest resident was between 1,200 and 1,500 feet away.
And how far was it to the resort that, that was previously designed?
It would be about 1,200 feet from the resort too.
So, in my mind, that was, that was the least intrusive site because we were the furthest distance away from any of the other eight sites that were studied. Is that right?
If you recall, on both sides of that site, there is a huge, if you call it wash or a canyon, both on the north side where the resort property is proposed to go and there's at least a 90-foot drop down into the Fire Rock community, but all along before we ever even got to the point of contemplating an architect, we always knew that we had to make the site as site-friendly as we possibly could. And with that specific site and our non-architectural brains, we always felt that the back end of that fire station, the north end of that fire station, if you will, would probably be eight to 10 feet underground. So, a very small section of that fire station would actually be seen by anybody from the north of that station. Now, obviously the roof would have to be seen and that again, you know, would take somebody with a little creativity to come up with a, a flat sloped roof or something that would pick up the contour of that slope going down into that valley there where that would become a very unobtrusive site and all the lighting obviously would have to be low lighting, we wouldn't have the tall lights that a lot of parking lots have. So, we really felt that with a little bit of ingenuity, most people would never even know, especially from the north, that that was a fire station there. And even you could get to the point by driving by that station that you may have to look twice to realize that it's a fire station. Station one, for example, today, a lot of people don't realize that it's a fire station until they look at it a little bit closer and see the sign out in front of it. So, again, you know, we would have to be sensitive to the needs of our neighbors there and make sure that we build a station that had the least amount of sight and noise and light pollution that we could possibly afford in the dollars that we have.
One last question, Scott, if I may. If we didn't move forward with the plan designed for this station, would we miss an opportunity to get FEMA grants?
Quite honestly, I, I can't answer that question. I, I could only assume that it would help us in the process, but for me to sit here in front of you and say that if we do this tonight, it's going to be a slam dunk, I'd be lying to you. I do believe that it would increase our chances, but that's just my own individual belief.
Well, I know, I know that we've read, all read in the paper about how Phoenix and some of the other larger towns have their, their own lobbyists out there to, to get some of the stimulus money and we've seen, you know, or at least this council has had the discussion about the frustration of having some shovel-ready projects and not being able to get any of the stimulus money that would help alleviate and actually create jobs around here, but help alleviate the, the pressures on our, on our budget and our funds. And I certainly wouldn't want to pass up the opportunity, but I would want to try to at least put our best foot forward to the point that maybe we're a little bit ahead of those guys with their lobbyists and stuff and maybe they don't have a, you know, a shovel-ready fire station project ready to go, but if we can get that, that, that little edge into the door, I'd certainly want to promote that so that we were, we were there and ready to go when they, when they pull the trigger. Thanks, Scott.
Mr. Mayor, could I, can I make one, one comment?
Yes, please.
In regards to what Councilman Cantino said, and I, and I really appreciate, and I know it comes from your heart and your concern about the safety of our firefighters because I've known you for 13 years and it's always been that way. Not for a moment would I suggest any site for a fire station that I thought would be unsafe for the response of our firefighters. And we looked at that site pretty hard and we believe that through not only the interconnecting of the streetlights on Palisades and Fountain Hills that we would control and by also putting in another smaller warning type of light for any bleed-through traffic that got through on Palisades that we could stop coming out, but our sightlines pulling out of that site, when we look east on that site and particularly sitting in the front seat of a fire truck, but sitting in the front seat of my small truck, looking east, I can see past Fountain Hills Boulevard, almost to the curve where she starts to curve around there. Pulling out and looking to the west, we can see that, we can see the, the top of the traffic signal lights and we can see cars just starting to break over the horizon. So, the sightlines are, are pretty darn good on, on Shea Boulevard and we feel that they're far superior than the King's Tree site that we had contemplated a long time ago. So, that was a concern of ours is that how safe would it be for us to pull out, but we feel that through technology and just plain old sightline that, that, that's a pretty good spot. But, you know, we were concerned about being on a 55 mile an hour street, but we feel pretty comfortable with that.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, thank you. Kind of really glad you mentioned that because in looking at all of the meetings we have had about this and writing notes for tonight, I, I, and just remembering, least impact, least impact. The location that we're talking about right now, we fully vetted the lighting issue, the light, the, not only would it bug the, the neighbors, but the, the timing of the streetlights, the stoplights, the fact that we talked about the noise, not only the sirens, but are you going to be on the, the mic, you know, the two ways, is it going to be intrusive? No, we talked about traffic, we talked about the line of sight, we, we talked about all of these things. Again, the integrity of deciding where you're going to locate something, we've talked about that. This is a safe, good location in order to reach as many people as you can, using the law of averages, using the only process that's available to make decisions like this. It's just like insurance or anything else. You can't know when something's going to happen the minute it happens, but you do the things that you know to do to prepare yourself for it and that's what this location does. We talk about money, we talk about capital improvement project. This is $114,000 for a possible future cost of one to two million, let's even say. But what other priorities are there down the line? We don't do it this year. So, we get the 1.1, we almost have 10 million for next year. We have road issues. Those are important and I agree with that, but what do we, what are the priorities? What are we saying? Are we saying that we don't think we need another fire station? And if we are saying that, then you're questioning the integrity of the process and that's just another whole conversation. I'm not questioning that and that's why I am prepared tonight to move forward with this in this location and the stimulus money thing too. Absolutely, it'll have a better chance. Will it get it? I don't know. Will this make it not get it? Has a lot better chance of getting it if it's designed, architecturally designed.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickey. Any other comments on this item? We've got a motion and a second. All right. Any, did we go to the public on this? It was about an hour ago, wasn't it? All right. I'll go for a roll call vote here. Gav, thank you. I'm sorry, Councilmember Legay.
We've spent an awful lot of time on philosophy and who's in the loop, who's not in the loop, what the location is so forth and so on, and we're about to vote on a service contract agreement and frankly, I haven't had any time to ask any questions specifically about the service contract agreement that we're looking at and I'm not sure anyone else has really asked specific questions, but I, I can't go to that. So, I do have some specific questions about what I discovered in the service agreement to Councilman Cantino's concern. I did discover that that was the site that was recommended, Shea. I did discover that that was the site that was recommended, Shea. And Fire Chief, if you were in mind, I have a few questions regarding the agreement itself. In the agreement, it talks about a cost of $1.5 million, and I know that's an approximation. And looking at the proposal and what has been built in the past, and I think by square footage, there were some costs associated with, that kind of seems like that would be a good estimate, and that's probably how somebody got there. Are there any other indirect costs that are associated with that? Is that 1.5 million, you know, turnkey, ready to roll? Does that include street improvements, median improvements, sewerage, you know, the whole enchilada, just not the structure itself?
Mayor, Councilwoman LaGuerre, that's correct. What we did is we took a 5,000-square-foot building. We based our square footage cost on kind of an average of what the valley fire departments have been spending for fire stations. And if I'm correct, I believe we came up with $285 a square foot, and that did include site improvements and everything, turnkey, as you mentioned. We had looked at a percentage of the total cost for architects' engineering and design work based upon Scottsdale's numbers of 25%, which we found out were extremely high. And I believe this contract proposal came in at around just slightly over 7% of the total cost of that 1.5 million, and that's where that $114,000 number came into. But yes, to answer your question, that's all rolled up.
Okay. And perhaps you can answer this, if not, perhaps our architect can answer this question. In looking at what I call the scope of work, there's a series of, page one of three of Exhibit A, there are a series of costs. The first, what I'm calling phase, because there's a subtotal there, is the site investigation. That's the engineering work. And then we move down to preliminary design, which goes to additional civil engineering work. And interestingly enough, I think it's important to note that it looks like local engineer would be used on this project, Montgomery Engineering. And then after that, additional engineering, it goes down to architectural. So I kind of looked at it. Some of those things are in phases, and some of those things are happening concurrently. Do we have an estimate of how much time that will take us to move through those tasks, to go from the original site investigation down through the continued engineering and design development construction? How long is it going to take? If we were to approve this this evening and Montgomery and our architect went to work on it, what would that, how much time would that take?
With your permission, I'd like to have Mr. Hunt answer that for you.
Please.
Just over here this time. Councilmember, Mayor, you know, that's like trying to pick something out of the air. When I figured the cost, I put together not a percentage fee. I did a breakdown of hours that we expected to expend on that. Typically, a fire station will take between two to four months to go from contract to ready to submit to the city for a building permit review.
Okay. Thank you very much for answering the question. Sometimes it's a crapshoot. You run into some issues. And Mayor, if I may, the reason I'm sensitive about timeline is because, once again, it was put on the table by our chief as well as the mayor, this whole notion of stimulus. So with that being said, does anyone in the House, so to speak, and I'm sure the chief may not have these answers, have any answers for this with respect to timeline? For instance, what type of timeline do we need? You know, when do we need to apply? How much is available? You said it's up to 5 million, so that answers one of the questions. How much time will we need before actual construction? I mean, for example, can you get in the game on this and, you know, have enough time, four months, so forth, to design it between a deadline? Does any, I mean, do we have any answers to any of these questions? I don't have answers.
Councilmember LaGuerre, I think Councilmember Dickey might be able to fill us in a little.
Mayor, thank you. I think I mentioned that they said they would probably have the criteria and development established by June or July. So that would probably be when we would have to apply, or at least we'd know what they're looking for. There's probably, like, there's $210 million and there's $5 million cap. So hopefully, they'll be looking at trying to do as many projects as possible, and in this case, I think that what Scott said was good, that we would be, you know, between one and two. And then one of the timelines said that May 20th, that some of the agencies would begin reporting their competitive grants and contracts. I don't think this one will be ready until June or July, and then some recipients will begin reporting on their use of the funds in July. But these are just, you know, they're out there now. But, you know, like, the Whipple one we were talking about earlier, we're already moving on those, and that's a state one, but still, it's not something you can really put your finger on, but at least this gives you an idea.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickey.
Mayor, can I add to that for a councilman? Based upon my past history with filling out competitive grants under FEMA for firefighters' grants, and we've been successful in three of them over the past eight years, several things that they ask you in that 30, 40-page packet that you fill out when there's a match, well, first of all, they ask you, why are you asking for this money? And so, you know, you have to explain the situation that you're in and explain why you're worthy to be considered to have this money bestowed to you. Another thing that they ask is, are you committed to the match? And again, there may not be a match on this one here, but I'm assuming through the FEMA process that there could possibly be a match. And so what they are looking for is, what's your commitment to that match? And define your commitment. Is your commitment a line item in your budget for the 10% of the money that you're asking for? Or is it some type of collateral that you're putting up, such as $114,000 worth of site work and architectural plans, or $1 million for a piece of property for that fire station, or whatever you're asking for? And so that's one of the financial things that the federal government is extremely interested in, is your commitment, because they don't want to sign on to you as a potential grant recipient if you're going to renig on them in the 11th hour, when they could have given that money to somebody else. And that's a problem that they're having right now, which kind of speaks to Dennis Cutino's, Councilman Cutino, I'm sorry, concern about strings attached. They have a grant called the Safer Grant where they pay for personnel over a five-year period, and it's a sliding scale. Each year, they pay less and the community pays more, and at the end of the five years, you're paying for all of it. Well, now that the economy kind of went south on everybody, there's people in these communities in the Safer Grant that are trying to back out and not be responsible for that, and they're probably going to have to pay that money back to the government. So I don't know if there'd be any strings attached to this, other than the fact that in your application, they want to see what your commitment is along with what your need is. And they're going to hold you to that commitment because they're going to audit you to the point where you finally do a closeout on that grant.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, one more thing. When you mentioned that you're familiar with this process and that we've actually been successful, that's a really good sign also, because at least in a lot of the cases, the ones that I know of so far, the process for distributing these stimulus funds are what these agencies are used to doing already. So, for example, if you've already been successful in this exact same agency, there's a good chance you've got a history with them, but also that you know how to fill it out, what to do, what's needed. Because this is really being looked at as an infusion of more, of just an ability to distribute more funds, and a lot of times, you're going to stick right with the process they've been using all along. So that's a good sign.
I would comment the, I've been pretty clear that I've not been in favor of this location or this realignment of fire station at this time because of our financial situation. Time after time now, we've been shown by our trusted Fire Chief Lagreca and other professionals that have worked on it, that this location is probably the best location there is. Because of that, I've gotten more comfortable with considering the design of this station myself. But I would only consider it with the fact that there's stimulus dollars potentially available, because our financial situation has not changed. There's been more and more dialogue around location, and I feel that this is probably the only location that's viable at this time or in the future. If the design is done, stimulus funds are not obtained, and our financial situation has not improved, I would still not vote to move forward likely on a fire station to be constructed, that location, due to, you know, financial responsibility of having our town with sufficient funds in operations and also in capital for potential uses that we may not be aware of at this time. But I'm confident that this location is the best location. I'm confident in the request and suggestion from Chief Lagreca that the location that we have now is not serving our needs as we need to deliver services. I'm fortunate that we're working on the supplemental location for emergency services to be more responsive to areas where the times have been longer than what we're comfortable with. But if it weren't for the chance to, and the need to have a design at least completed in order for us to be in line for potential stimulus dollars, and the fact that our emergency services folks state that this site is needed, I wouldn't be in favor of moving forward on the design work. I'm also, may not have considered it at $300,000 for design work, but since $250,000 from the budgeted amount to this $114,000 amount is now what's before us, I'm more likely to incline to agree to the funding of the design of the fire station. As far as the location, I'm comfortable with that location being the best. I don't see any other alternatives on the horizon, although others have floated up over the past several months. I don't see the likelihood of any others coming forward. So that's where I'm at right now.
Mayor, oh, yes. Councilmember Hanson.
Just real quick, I think we want to also keep in mind, though, if we did get the stimulus money, that would lock this project into a higher priority on the capital improvement plan. I mean, in the past, it would be like, we could get the design, but it doesn't mean that we would be committed to build it right away, whereas if we did get the stimulus monies, we would be.
Thank you. Councilmember LaGuerre?
Could, if I may, Cass, could, I'd like to understand what you're saying. Could you clarify?
I can try.
Councilmember Hanson?
I know in the past, when we've talked about doing the design, that was separate from actually committing to put it on the calendar, to do the construction. But the way the stimulus money seemed to be working, there are time constraints on that, and it would force our hand, in essence, to move that up on our construction schedule, maybe sooner than we would have if we didn't have the stimulus monies. So we would be losing a little bit of our discretionary authority there because we'd have to use it. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And Mayor, just have a final comment. I, you've articulated kind of my point of view. I mean, you know, where I've been with this is that in the original budget, I frankly voted against the design, because I know design has a tendency to commit to build. And it was not for public safety reasons. It was simply because I understand what our financial future looks like, and it's more dire today than it was when I voted against the design. We have an interim solution, but as Councilwoman Dickey said and Councilman Arshimbo or Vice-Minor Arshimbo, that is very temporary. And we need that, because if we go with this project, it's still going to be some timing. We want some life-saving apparatus up at Fry's. The stimulus, kind of as I stated 15 minutes ago, kind of, you know, put me in the middle of this, thinking, okay, well, public safety, I agree with that location. I've always pretty much been on board with that location. But for me, it's always been about our financial future and our economic forecasts that are dire. So I'm excited. I think it's an opportunity with the stimulus dollars. However, I was hedging on that to see if there was a way to guarantee that, you know, if we went down this road, this would not be money wasted. For example, if we have the design in hand, as my colleagues have mentioned several times, they could be used on this particular site. Therefore, once again, and I'll go there, if, for example, we move to approve this contract, for all the reasons we've talked about, contingent on stimulus, which is what you're hearing from a couple folks up here, could we approve the initial phase of the contract, i.e. preliminary engineering and concept plan, and hold back on the rest of the scope of the work contingent on stimulus award? In other words, engage the contract, have the commitment, begin the initial work, which puts us into the process, does that give us a higher probability of meeting criteria? And I was hoping that question could be answered this evening, but it seems like we don't have the answer to that question. You see what I'm doing? I'm kind of hedging a bet, if you may, rather than rushing.
Mayor, I see exactly what you're doing. And again, that's thinking outside of the box. The only two question that comes to my parochial mind is, A, I think our attorney would have to answer part of that question based upon how that contract is crafted, and B, you know, is that something that the architect would be willing to sign on to? And those are two questions that I just can't answer. But the other part, you know, it sounds like a good plan to say, when we are going out and competing for that bid, you know, we're not telling them a fib, you know, we're working on it. We may not be working on the whole thing, but we're working on it. Will that work?
In particularly, Mayor, in particularly, and am I thinking here, and what I've suggested is that we would actually engage in the civil engineering work, and we would actually engage in the site investigation, because it seems like that is the most unique thing about this site. I mean, I've looked at the fire stations they've done in the past, and, you know, they can simp, you know, it's a matter of adapting it to the site. Mayor, if I may, Andrew, I know in our contract, there's something called termination for convenience. Would this fit that scenario? If we went, if we agreed to contract, went down this road, we started Phase One Civil Engineering, we got a product from that, and at the end of that phase, we got a sense that the stimulus wasn't going to happen, would that be a reason for termination for convenience?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember LaGuerre, I think that convenience terms are specifically for that purpose. What I am reluctant to give you any kind of an opinion on is whether or not the architect would be comfortable that the scope of work could be bifurcated in this way at this price. I know that it's been my experience that when we bifurcate things, they become more expensive, because they're insular pieces put together with the end goal being the same, but interim steps along the way. I don't know that that's been discussed with the firm. I don't know that we can guarantee anything on that. I know that when we terminate a contract, it costs us money to terminate. I don't, if we do that and then come back to this, that we're not costing more money. Those are just, because this is a fresh idea and never even contemplated with the architect, I don't believe it's fair to even put them on the spot to ask them if this is a contract they can part up that way when now it's down to a number that's a third of the budget. So I'm... So I, I don't feel comfortable telling you that it's a good idea to move forward counting on using our termination for convenience clause. That clause is mainly there to protect us in the case of a budgetary constraint or a problem that we couldn't foresee.
Councilmember Legere, I'm not sure, we're still not exactly confident what the guidelines are going to be, or even if this is going to be enough to have us in position for the, for any FEMA grants. I think that this design is probably at least a minimum of what FEMA is going to look for. And I think I'm, I'm fairly confident that this is at least what they're going to look for. I don't know where you could draw the line between civil engineering and architectural work, or structural engineering and some of the other components on here, what part we could take out at this point. I'm, I'm fairly confident enough that that location is good, that this design would be relevant at a time down the road that we decide to build it, or that we can afford it, to build it. And it's only because the 107, $114,000 for the design could conceivably be, we could add another 150 to $200,000 if we're in a 10% grant matching FEMA grant. We could potentially have a fire, a million and a half to $2 million fire station for 260, $300,000 out of our town funds. That's what I'm envisioning, that's what I'm, I'm, I'm not expecting, but I would be hopeful for, through the stimulus monies. Is that fairly accurate, Chief Legreca, that we've got our design fees? If grants go the way they've gone through FEMA for this type of scenario, that we would have a 10% match, which would be 10% of the construction cost, I would suspect, and then the, the grant would pick up the balance?
Mayor, based upon my history, that's how FEMA for firefighter grants have operated, a 10% match for a community our size, larger communities pay a 20% match. But this $114,000 would go towards fulfilling our part of the 10% match.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could ask Mr. Hunt a question, I think I could maybe put some, some things to rest in previous discussions we've had about these plans. Mr. Hunt, if you could answer for me, if we went forward with the design of these plans, and then let's say we get some FEMA grant in front of us that just doesn't look like it's something we can truly accept, would these plans go out of date, or would they be current enough that they would just maybe need to be freshened up a little bit, say five years down the road?
I can answer yes to both of those questions. Number one, it would, the design would be good, could be made good for any location. The structural and the detailing may not be good at another location. That is what a site adapt does. It would have to change probably foundations. The soils investigation tells us what we're going to have to carry the load with. There may be some of these walls that are retaining walls, because we've talked about it being nestled into the side of the, the hill at that location. Those, you wouldn't want to build any other location. So there would be some redesign at any other location other than this one.
But if we kept that location, five years down the road, the plans would still be relevant, would they not?
To the extent that the codes can change, the International Building Code changes every three years, depends on the city adopting of the latest revisions to it.
Would that require huge expenses on our part to update the plans?
It'd be a minimal expense.
And so, so we wouldn't, if, if we were to wait, say, five years down the road and have these plans drawn, would we be looking at a considerable increase in costs?
How, how do you mean that?
Five years down the road, would you be charging another 100, would you be charging $114,000 for these plans, or would you be charging considerably more? There you go. Can't put any more simpler than that.
Okay. We, we put a good price on it today. This is a recession. We made a very good price. And we did it based on what we expected our man hours to be. We typically have run around 10% our fees. I'd love to get some of those 25% that Scottsdale's talking about, but we typically are in the neighborhood of 8 to 10%. And depends on what it is then. A fee is good today until...
And you brought up a very good point, the fact that construction, construction costs are coming down. And I'm seeing it, my builders are seeing it, and I think it's a prime opportunity. You know, hopefully we don't get a grant that's got so many strings attached to it that we just couldn't conceivably attach, or accept it. But, you know, I'm certainly seeing costs coming down, which could make this an opportune time if we got the grant money to take advantage of.
That's right.
All right, let's try to get through this before we have to take a nature break, to get through the rest of our agenda. Any other significant comments?
Very, very quick, I'm certainly an advocate of, of public safety, and cost has always been the issue. In light of stimulus, I certainly, you know, feel more comfortable after our lengthy discussion, perhaps supporting this, but I want to kind of make it clear that it is contingent on, on stimulus dollars. Not, not the project in the future, but I'm saying, doing the project now. I've always been in favor of doing the project at some point in time, but it was the economic firestorm we ran into that had, had me pretty much hedging on that. But I think if I move forward, it would certainly be contingent on, on the stimulus dollars. So after all, what we'd be approving tonight is the design, and we'd have the pleasure of having this lengthy discussion once again, once we get to actually approving a building, I would imagine. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, could I make one, one last comment?
Yes, please, Chief.
I, the Fire Department really welcomes this discussion. I think it's healthy. I think it would have been extremely counterproductive if you would have taken 60 seconds and given me a 6-0 vote on, on this. You know, I think the public has the right to hear this, to listen to this, to hear me explain why I'm standing in front of them and asking them for 100, I mean, one and a half million dollars. One and a half million dollars is a lot of money to me, and I'm a taxpayer in this town too, so I have personal interest in this here. But I, I feel very uncomfortable spending the taxpayers' money without giving them the full scope of the reason why I'm asking them to do this, why I stand in front of you and ultimately them, and request your consideration, your support, and your approval on what I bring forward. So for some, this may seem to be a painful exercise that we're going through, and we have gone through for the past couple years. But I, I feel that it's, it's positive. Anybody who's watched this on TV, I, I think that they'll feel more comfortable about it. At least they'll be able to make a better informed decision on this process. So again, I, I think it's healthy that we've done this, and we continue to do this until this comes to fruition, whenever it comes to fruition. And again, you know, we require, demand, beg for your support in your direction on what direction we go with this project. So I just want to thank you for this conversation tonight.
Thank you, Chief Legreca. The, regarding the agreement, the only thing that I had seen that asked question about is, or what I was more, most curious about is the timeline, and it looks like we're contracted through the end of this year on this. And I think with the timeline, with the FEMA potential funds coming through the stimulus, we'd want to get this going as quickly as possible so that we could hit any window that may pop up when it, when it makes itself available. So I would like it to be before that December timeline, or the end of the, the contract period, and assume that's everybody's desire, to get that done. The, why I'm going to be supportive of this is, if we, if we are successful, it means about $1,300,000 coming into our town through the stimulus, that we do not have to spend from our limited capital improvement plan reserves. And I believe our 20-year CIP may add up to, is it $90 million? Ninety some, 96 million dollars in projects, and we currently have a, you know, a $10 million fund. So there are many projects in our capital improvement plan that cannot be funded. So it's not my desire to keep this project from being built, because I don't feel it's worthwhile, it's simply there, there are more projects than we have money for. But to not make this investment in a site that I feel will be built upon at some point in time, if, sooner than later, if the stimulus dollars come in, if we do not, I don't feel comfortable if we do not move forward with this step, that we will not be eligible for potentially receiving $1.3 million on this site. So I feel comfortable moving forward in this decision. Any other comments before we go to vote? Councilmember Cantino?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I really sympathize with the chief, and yet I know he's proud of his man, and he's proud of his department and his job, and I commend you for that. I think that we did clear up the deal about the site, since it was in my packet, and I did read it. So it was there. That's all done. I'm really happy with what Councilman Legere said, his thoughts on what happens, and I think that we're all in agreement now, and I will be voting for it.
Mayor, good. I'm proud of, proud, proud to be a part of this council, it's good dialogue. All right, we'll call, look, we've got a motion in a second, all in favor of moving forward on this contract for architectural, or for design? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Quinn, in location, nay.
Nay?
I'm strictly in location.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, 5-1.
Thank you. All right, item nine, consideration of Resolution 2009-15, an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between the Town of Fountain Hills and Maricopa County Human Services for the Special Transportation Services, adjusting the per-trip rate from 38.25 per trip to a tiered trip prop, per-trip fee schedule based on direct distance mileage. Welcome, Julie.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As the council is aware, the town contracts with Maricopa County Special Transportation Services to provide transportation for qualified people for medical appointments, for shopping, for recreation. And we originally, the town had budgeted $90,000 for that program this fiscal year that we're in. The program was on track to be, to spend about $164,000, based on primarily the increase in the per-trip fee that the county charged the town. Staff's been working with the county to see if there's a way that we can reduce the cost without impacting the, the clients, the people who use the services. And the county was very receptive to that, and actually offered up a tiered program of a fee schedule, and making it retroactive back to July 1st. So basically, what it means is, the majority of the trips that our clients take are under 20 miles, 90% of them. So rather than paying 38.25 per trip for even a two-mile trip, we'll now pay a tiered schedule, meaning the first 10 miles will be $22, and so on. So the most expensive trip under 20 miles is $29 per trip. So based on those, the revised estimates, the town will spend only about $120,000, as opposed to $164,000. So there's a significant savings, and it doesn't impact any of the clients, or reduce any of the trips. And so we're quite appreciative of the county for offering that, and then this, this is the only change to the program we're making at this time. The goal will be to, to monitor this and see if it makes a difference, and that we, so we don't have to make any adjustments to the program next year.
Thank you. Any questions? Any comments from public on this one? Councilmember Hanson.
Julie, has any progress been made on, on the volunteer program that could kind of augment the service for the social and recreational trips, thereby reducing the cost a little bit more?
Mayor, some, Councilmember Hanson, not at this time. We've been working with the county primarily to get this per-trip rate down, and so monitoring that and see how it has, has an effect, and then we'll go into it. But now, to answer your question, we haven't done that yet. Thank you.
I do feel the same way about the program. This has appreciated savings to a very expensive program, and it will save us money, and retro, and having to go retro is terrific. Very good job, and, but we do need to have an alternative to this program. But this is, this is a good interim step, but certainly not the overall answer, in my opinion. I'll look for a motion to approve Resolution 2009-10, and the amendment to the intergovernmental agreement of Maricopa County for Special Transportation Services at the revised trip rate schedule.
So moved.
All right, we've got it for a second. Any other dialogue questions for staff? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you much. Thank you, Julie. All right, next item, consideration of accepting a sculpture titled Blue Spire, being proposed by the Public Art Committee to be purchased and installed utilizing the 1% Public Art Fund. Welcome, Mark. Says welcome, Mark. Brian, nice to see you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The piece before you is titled Blue Spire. Mark Mayor did present this to the council originally at the March 19th meeting. It has a cost of, negotiated acquisition price cost of $5,000, plus another $1,000 for delivery. The annual insurance for the piece is less than $26,000, or $26.
There you go.
$26, sorry. A long night for you guys and me.
Very dangerous.
Yes, $26. And the piece, as I said, was presented to you guys at the March 19th, and the Community Center Advisory Commission also reviewed the piece and approved, recommended its acceptance at the, their February 23rd meeting. Just want to remind the council that this piece is being brought to the Public Art Fund, which is collected for this purpose, and not from the Town's General Fund, so that, any questions?
Any questions for staff on Blue Spire? Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Brian, can you tell us, the funds, the 1% art funds that we have, what does that reduce this down to?
Ultimately, we talked about that a lot this morning amongst staff, ultimately when we're done, the balance should be about $1,000, if everything else the council's accepted and committed to it.
So that'll pretty much wipe it out, won't it?
I think we might be on hold for a while on other pieces, so yes.
There is, if I could ask one, one other question. I noticed that the original piece was priced at $6,000, and that we're purchasing it at $5. Is there a reason, I mean, it seems like a lot of the pieces they bring to us have had significant reductions to it, and I was just curious if you...
I, I can't answer that question, Kirk. Although I do know that, yeah, it's less than what was originally quoted, I guess, so less is better.
Okay. Good negotiators on the Art Committee.
Yes.
Generous artists that see a great deal of value having their pieces in our beautiful town. Any other questions, comments? All right.
Thanks for staying up so late, Brian. Appreciate it.
Did I get a motion in a second on this? I think we did.
Yes.
I'm sorry, could I get?
Motion in a second?
No. Could I get a motion to move to accept a sculpture titled Blue Spire to be purchased and installed utilizing the 1% Public Art Fund? All right. Any other questions, comments? Nobody from public?
No.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, 6-0.
All right, thanks. All right, council discussion direction to the town manager? Any items, town manager?
None.
All right. Somebody have a request? None? Let's see, what's next? I'll look for a motion to adjourn. No? Wow. First and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Amazing with this.